And so we can, so then he has a free in that she's fine. I mean, this one is tight and they can't do this. So which makes sense. The next we're gonna know what we talked about, but it's the buddy.
Oh, I love if we named the TC one.
I love you.
No, I don't. No, I don't. I always say my husband and I have a good disagreement over the same things.
Not over the microphone.
He wouldn't talk.
Yeah.
So you just take your role.
Yeah, which makes sense.
I heard you. Six minutes.
I know, but when he told you that it was in the.
And if you go for the same.
I know what she wants to get to. It's how much money it is.
Well, I have just.
You can see the golden. It was like something that.
Yeah. It was funny because I'm playing this, okay? But I walked by and then the snow's coming. I just love eighty something degrees to this all day.
Yes, I was sure.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to the Fort Thomas Planning Commission meeting on March the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four. This evening, we are going to continue with our review of the zoning ordinance update with presentation by CP Consultants. This evening, we're going to review Article Three, which is the various zoning districts of the city.
Shall we begin? Can y'all give me okay?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So, good evening. I am Elisa Wabi Rogers with CP Consultants and with me, who is CT, also is Frank Turey. And thank you very much for having us here this evening. So tonight, we will quickly run through the zoning ordinance update process. I will give a summary of the comments I heard at the coffee and conversation sessions in February. We will review selected topics from the five zoning districts, and those are the single-family, two-family residential districts, the residential cluster overlay district, the multi-family district, the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district, and the Tower Park historic overlay district. As we move through the presentation, I will be highlighting only the significant changes from Phase Two or those topics that we identified in Phase Two as needing more discussion. And then we will end with next steps. If we don't get through all those sections tonight, we will continue the discussions at the planning commission meeting in April. I will stop several times during the presentation to answer questions and keep the phone peeing numbers.
Excuse me, before we start, that looks like the agenda that we have for tomorrow's meeting. That's not what it is.
We're going to stay.
No.
Well, the agenda for tonight does not land out. Like it's just.
Yeah, that's all this for tonight. Tomorrow night, there's a.
I saw that she had a agenda up there.
That's just my agenda for the presentation. The zoning ordinance update process is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included an analysis of the existing conditions as well as a thorough examination of the existing zoning and subdivision ordinance. At the end of that phase, we produce a diagnostic report with findings, recommendations, and that is available on the city's website. Phase Two included creating the revised regulations. The major changes from your current code were fleshed out, and a single document with all of the revisions from Phase Two is on the city's website as well. I will point out that the Phase Two draft shows how the updated regulations differ from the city's existing regulations. In Phase Three, which is where we all are now, we will complete all the amendments and align the zoning map with the new zoning districts. We started Phase Three in January, and the Phase Three draft of the zoning and subdivision regulation is also on the city's website, and the Phase Three draft tracks changes back to the Phase Two document. Phase Four includes adoption of the new zoning ordinance and the zoning map and the revised subdivision regulations. The planning commission will meet again tomorrow evening to finish the discussions regarding the zoning districts. Our final meeting for the planning commission during Phase Three will be a session to wrap up any outstanding issues which will happen on April seventeenth. At this point, those wrap-up issues include the signed regulations that did not finish in February. On Thursday, after the planning commission meetings, we hold the coffee and conversation sessions at Fort Thomas Coffee from ten forty, from ten to eleven forty-five in the morning and from six to eight as well. Please feel free to drop in anytime during those hours. At the planning commission meeting the following month, I will report out what I've heard of those coffee and conversation sessions. We will be holding a coffee and conversation on Thursday, March twenty first, but we are not planning to hold a session in April. At the public session in February, approximately twelve committee members attended, and we discussed the Unified Development Ordinance provisions for Midway Court. We discussed removing all references to the community plan from UDO with Unified Development Ordinance. And then the following provisions from the Central Business District for those midway and downtown were discussed. Incorporating a maximum number of stories, not just a maximum height, reducing the maximum building width regulation in the Town Center Core Subzoning District, permitting single-family detached dwellings as a by right in the Town Center Supporting District, removing the regulation for the development standards for the Town Center Core and the towns that are supporting that would allow buildings to exceed the maximum height by ten feet if they're set back a hundred feet from the sidewalk. We also discussed Section one ten, which is the waivers and modifications of equivalency provision, and we discussed how that compares and contrasts with variances, which is in Section one point seven, and we discussed the admissibility and the potential impacts of retaining provisions in Section one ten. We discussed the intent statements for all the zoning districts. Proposed historic overlay districts were discussed, particularly the town of Tower Park Historic Overlay District, and then we also discussed the appropriateness and the details of the Fort Thomas Avenue Overlay District. So we're going to start tonight with the single-family and two-family residential districts, specifically short-term residential properties and regulations. We see these existing regulations for short-term rentals such as air B and B and VRBO were created in two thousand and twenty-one, and after working with them for a few years, additional policy considerations have risen to the top. And so we're going to talk in a few minutes about short-term rental regulations in all of the zoning districts either tonight or tomorrow. The definition that you see on the screen is essentially the definition created in two thousand and twenty-one. It defines short-term rentals as an accessory use by guests who spend less than thirty consecutive days, and it requires short-term rentals to be incidental and subordinate to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes. This definition does not specify whether it is permissible to just rent a room within a dwelling or the entire dwelling as a short-term rental. In the Phase Three draft of the Unified Development Ordinance, short-term rentals are classified as an accessory use in all of the single-family districts and the two-family districts based on the two thousand and twenty-one regulations enacted by the city. As we move through the discussion of short-term rental properties in the single-family and two-family residential districts, let's be mindful of the essential question, which is should short-term rentals be the principal or an accessory use in the R one and the R two districts? If you ultimately decide accessory, what do you mean by accessory? Is it accessory because someone's having one bedroom in a house? Or is it accessory because the house is already rented, a whole house is already rented for a short-term rental, you know, less than a hundred and eighty days a year, for example? That would be another way for it to be accessory. But you have to think about what you mean as accessory. And then before we start discussing that essential question, let's run through the regulations for short-term rentals, which again were all created in two thousand and twenty-one. The city currently requires an annual permit or license. A copy of the current business liability insurance policy is required to be submitted to the city each time application for permit is filed. The occupational taxes must be paid. Each dwelling that's used for short-term rental is subject to inspection, and short-term rental units are permitted in attached single-family, detached single-family, two-family, dwelling units in business and mixed-use districts, condominiums, land dominions, and accessory dwelling units. And owners of rental properties have to consent to their property being used as a short-term rental, and condominium or land dominium owners have to have written permission from their homeowners association when they submit their application. In the R one and the R two zoning districts, short-term rental guests shall stay no more than twenty, twenty-nine consecutive days. When this regulation was originally passed in two thousand and twenty-one, limitation on the number of days in stay was not limited to the R one and the R two districts. That was a suggestion that was put in the base rating. As we begin to discuss the issues surrounding short-term rentals and the associated regulations, please keep in mind how these regulations should be tailored to the various zoning districts, because as I said, we're going to be talking about them for all of our zoning nine districts either tonight or tomorrow. All short-term rental dwelling units have to be in compliance with the applicable building code. Data and references shall be in compliance with their distinct building codes. Contact information for the owner has to be posted in the unit. An evaluation plan has to be in the unit. If the property has two or more substantial or civil or criminal complaints, then the license can be revoked. In the R one and the R two districts, the host has to provide off-street parking, and no more than two adults per bedroom with a limitation of six maximum. Each unit must comply with the city's doors ordinance and have a copy of the ordinance in the unit. The property owner or the owner of the short-term rental has to provide neighbors with up-to-date contact information. A person who violates the regulation is subject to a five hundred dollar fine, and the city has the right to seek adjusted relief. All right. Should short-term rental be a principal or accessory use in the R one and the R two districts? Any question?
I guess before we get started, you said some new considerations have risen to the top.
Yes. So more of them have risen in like the R three and R five districts as well as in the central business district. But if there's anything that's happened to the R one and the R two, Kevin's want to.
I mean, not really so much in the R one or R two. I think that I, what Elisa is talking about too is probably being more clear on the language. As she stated, you know, less than a hundred and eighty days, I think that was the, you know, the intent when we did it as an accessory use was that it was for snowbirds, they're going to Florida, that they could rent it out for the winter. But it not be a permanent permitted use as a short-term rental where different folks are rolling in and out. Now, that being said, we do have a, one that is a, I believe, a basement level. The idea behind the accessory use was that it was less square footage than the primary use. So those were, I don't know if they were implied or very specifically written in there, and maybe we just need to be more clear about that. But that was the implication, is that it was accessory. So it was less than square footage wise and or time wise. But as far as the R two, I'm sorry, Elisa had a little, you know, I guess, you know, in the partial zones, how do we need to handle those? We do have a, a, a short-term rental in the CP, CBD, and the way we interpret it was there were four units in the building for residential use, and there was a commercial space. And the thought process was if it's accessory, only two units, uh, two of the residential units could be short-term rental. So I guess Elisa maybe had some opinions on that. Is that right, wrong, or the other? I think part of the thought process was in our commercial districts was parking. I think obviously you're going to have a residential use there that has a possibly as vehicle. I don't know how much more parking could be affected. But like I said, Elisa might be able to expand a little bit more on, more the multi-family slash commercial concerns.
So before you decide to do it accessory, because your policy goal, as Kevin said, is, you know, we want it to be primarily someone's long-term home, then we need to say something more than it just is accessory. What does that mean? Is it less square footage than the principal block? Is it only used as a short-term rental for, you know, a hundred and eighty days a year for the snowbirds or whatever else? We just need to be more clear about that to give Kevin and some guidance as to what we can do.
So we don't say anything about that now?
No, it just says it has to be clearly incidental to the, and subordinate to the primary use as a dwelling. And that leaves a whole lot of room for interpretation.
I guess the only thing I was, I was, I get somewhat confused about is why are we differentiating R one and R two from the rest of the zoning districts in terms of the accessory use? I mean, what, what differentiates the two?
So we'll be there, we're going to start tonight with, I guess, short-term rentals, and we're going to end tonight with short-term rentals. So we're going to book in the whole meeting as well. So there are many communities who look at R three, which is your multi-family, and say, why do we care if it's a short-term rental or a long-term rental from a policy standpoint in terms of an impact standpoint? So in which case, if it's one of you rented a long-term or it's one of you rented a short-term and it's in your R two district, who cares? So in that case, if it's a principal use, it's not an accessory use. So that's why that's one difference there versus other places. In terms of like the CBD, it, the definition of short-term rental only deals with it as if it is a dwelling unit. But there is a building within the midway that has short-term dwelling units in it. But the definition in any way, in no way, contemplates that. So what we're attempting to do is clean all of this up.
Well, I think if I recall in the discussions we had a few years ago, there was no contemplation of that would be a permitted use in the commercial building.
Well, you, it was interesting. I'm going to go back.
That was kind of the intent.
Yeah, we go back and show you what, what was originally passed, actually.
Elisa, while you're doing that, can I also draw your attention to an ordinance that I think wasn't included, but I may be wrong. Ordinance O dash O three dash two thousand and twenty-one, which states, the accessory use of any residential dwelling unit that is advertised for rent for transient occupancy by guests for less than thirty days shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of a dwelling unit for residential purposes.
Right, that's the definition I just read.
Okay, thank you.
So what we originally passed at the time that it was done is central business district housing. So what did that mean? Did that mean dwelling units that were zoned central business districts? Or? And that may have been the intent, but that is not what it says. So what Kevin has encountered is a whole lot of ambiguity.
I get that.
That we're trying to clean up.
But I get it. I didn't, you know.
And, and, and let me just, let me just focus out there. These are all policy choices. There is no right or wrong. If you want to ask what other communities are doing, I'm happy to tell you that. But however you want to do it is perfectly fine. I just want to give Kevin and Mark some really good ideas.
I mean, honestly, I'd be interested to do a little legwork on other communities that have had those in central business districts or multi-family districts and the positives and negatives associated. I'll say that one person I talked to from another community in another state had a lot of negative things to say about the multi, multi-family areas, but I didn't get into the weeds of it, you know? I, I didn't really dig in. So I'd like to do important decisions probably, or maybe, probably, maybe do a little legwork on what, what are the causes and negatives for especially your multi-family? Because if you have all these multi-families, it's, it's, from the number standpoint, it's more lucrative to probably do Airbnbs in these multi-families and figure out how to buy them up and turn them into short-term rentals. Is that good? Is it bad? I don't know, but I think we need to be ready for those repercussions if, if that's something that we choose.
And let's, we can, let's defer that to the R three tonight, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I, you know, I'm just sort of trying to narrow the question as we're moving through this. So right now, we're talking about R one and R two, but let's narrow it to R one, because if you're, it's an R two, then it might not be accessory, right? Because an R two is a, is a two-family dwelling, and is it, again, we're just saying, you're renting a bedroom of an R two? Or could you have one unit in an R two? But let's just talk about single-family R one right now. What's your policy choice?
So if we make it a principal use, we just don't regulate it at all?
If you make it a principal use, it would be a principal use that is restricted. So it would have all of those standards that we just went through. Have to have occupational like, you have to have occupational tax.
We understand that, but in, in terms of whether it's the majority of the square footage or whatever else, we don't have a restriction on that.
Correct, correct. So that, that.
We could put that in the restrictions, I suppose, even if we had a principal use that too.
Yes, you could, you could. I will tell you as a little bit of background, I did a little bit of legwork to see what you got out there on VP RO and on Airbnb. And they, you know, I don't know what Kevin would say, but you don't have that many of them. And typically, they are more used in places that are vacation rental type areas or university towns or those kinds of things. So by nature, you're probably not going to get a whole lot of them, but we don't know that for sure. And there are communities who feel very strongly that once you make it a principal use, you are interjecting a commercial use into a single-family neighborhood, and that has huge implications. And, and, and most of them are negative implications, so, in, in my opinion. And if you want me to talk about what those, those impacts are, I'm happy to do that. Tim's shaking his head. Well, it's a transient population, right? Instead of having your neighbor next door who's always next door, there are people coming and going constantly. So there's this fear of, well, who's going to be, who's going to be living next door to me for the next X number of days? There's that. There's the, what if it's, you know, if my son and his, you know, college fraternity friends rented out and have a party kind of concern? There is the, you know, if it's my college son and his friend, all of his college friends, how many cars are going to be next door? What state are they going to leave the property in? Essentially, someone is operating a business next door to your single-family home, and that wasn't your expectation when you bought into a residential neighborhood. So, but there are communities who do it, I mean, who allow short-term rentals as a principal use in their single-family districts, but most of them are vacation destination kind of places.
But the same concerns would apply whether we've got an accessory use or a principal use, wouldn't it be?
It can be, yes. So that's why how you define it as accessory is important, right? So your definition right now says they can't stay more than twenty-nine days at a consecutive time, which doesn't work necessarily for a snowbird, right? They exit their home for X number of days, and they may be renting it to someone who's doing the reverse for the same number of days. So that limitation in and of itself doesn't necessarily work, but if you said the home or the room or whatever else is only rented for X number of days, at least it's only going to be for half the year or whatever. But yes, for half a year, you can still have those same kinds of concerns. Or you can say it has to be accessory because it's less square footage. But in that point in time, you're essentially allowing another dwelling unit to be occupied within your home for some, for some of the transit population. So yes, there are some impacts if you make it accessory on both, both of those ends.
My kids were all in town a couple of weeks ago, and they stayed at an Airbnb in Southgate, and I don't know if they regulate it or not, but I felt uncomfortable just going there because the streets were narrow anyhow and you parked on those sides and there was only one lane, even though it's two-way traffic. I thought maybe it's just because of my planning condition that made me uncomfortable. But I wouldn't like to live next door to it. We had three cars there and, you know, the parkings are the premium there. Again, but, you know, it's nice for people to be able to make money, but our job here in planning condition is not to make sure, you know, someone makes money. If they wanted to be a snowbird, it's really to protect the neighborhood. And I, I was, I mean, I was glad they had a place to stay because we couldn't handle all of them, but I, I still, I don't know that we want to make it real easy because it could get abused really quickly.
Can be.
I know some of the, the other city attorneys I've talked to, we meet for lunch once a month, and some of the different cities have struggled with that quite a bit. And the common conception is that what is helping us deal with it right now is the price point for Tom's, and that, that is an impediment at some level to, to using it for these purposes. But I think when you get ahead of it.
I, I mean, the concern I have is if you make it a principal use, somebody could purposely build a, a house for that purpose.
Or buy them up.
Or buy them up and then, and do a reconstruction of the house for that purpose.
And it is happening, that is happening in some places.
Yes, in Fort Thomas.
And so by keeping it in an accessory use, and even if we have a, you know, a subordinate square footage percentage limitation, you're kind of still forcing those people to say, hey, this is my house. This is a, this is, you know, an operation where I'm just, you know, the intent was to be owner-occupied essentially.
And you could make that a, I mean, there are places who, it doesn't work with snowbirds, but there are places who say, in order for you to use it as a short-term rental, it has to be owner-occupied. You have to be there while the guest is there. There are places who do that for a myriad of reasons. It makes it more accessory, but then you're less likely to have the loud parties and the trash and all of those things because the people, if they're there with their guests, they're not going to put up with the, with the party.
I'd feel much more comfortable if we went in there. That's just me. Owner-occupied.
In, in R one.
Yeah, definitely. But say, I don't want that.
In R two, I think, R two if it's, you know, you know, you'd still want them living there and renting out the other half.
Which works, right? And that's.
That works better than the single family.
Well, but in R two, I mean, if you leased a whole thing, you could have a permanent resident in your, in one side, and then if you did the other in short term, I don't, I mean, definitionally, whether that would, would prevent that or, or trust.
Yeah, but I, you know, the, the thing is, even if you had a two-family, it'd be an absentee landlord situation. They're not going to be a problem.
Well, I gotta think that we've got that right now, that, that there's two families that are not necessarily owner-occupied.
Right, but I think if it's a long, if it's a tenant, it's a longer lease situation, they're less likely to be a nuisance or something.
Oh, I, I see.
And your current standards say if you are not the property owner, for example, like if you were renting a duplex and you had both sides, the property owner has to assign the application saying that you can use the other side as a short-term rental. That's already in your regulations. So that's good. But if it's a situation where the property owner is intentionally having one side as a long-term tenant and the other side as a short-term tenant, it's, depending on who that long-term tenant is, you may not have the same oversight that you could have in a single-family home that's owner-occupied. But keep in mind, there's nothing, either in your current regulations or what we talked about here, that would preclude someone from renting the house and then using the basement apartment as a short-term rental if the property owner agrees to that. Unless we want to say it does act, in order for you to use it, it has to be owner-occupied. You are not renting your house at all.
I'm going to think at the very least, I think we've answered the question, it's an accessory use.
Yep, we know that. It was accessory use. So then the next question is, what other standards do we want to put? That's where we are. I think, you know, the three that I put up here are good ones. Last one, never park vehicles or access, you know, you definitely want to say you can't park on the street, which is like the Southgate problem. You want to be very clear that the permit is not transferable if you sell. And this was a new one that I saw recently. All the guests have to be of the same rental agreement. So that way you don't, the short, and maybe, you may or may not need that if it's owner-occupied, but you still might. So that you're not, because potentially if you have a big house, you might convert it to two separate guests in two separate bedrooms, which would be not in the same country.
Or one guest could rent the whole house, and they could have guests come in and out.
Yeah.
And so if that's the case, how can you keep up with that?
Well, we're going to, she just said it has to be owner-occupied while we're in the, while the guests are there. So for example, I rented one in Asheville. It was VRBO. And if you could imagine, the original house was in the middle, and they had put two wings on it.
I've seen them.
Yeah. And each wing was rented by someone else. I was in one side of the, my husband and I were on one side of the door. I was in one side, and my husband and I were on one side, and the other guests on the other side. Which again, adds a whole, a much more commercial, even if it is owner-occupied, because in that case it was, it does add more commercial activity to what should be a single-family zone.
So currently, I don't think we prohibit it on street parking, you just require one parking spot off-street. Right, I mean, we had that discussion, I remember we had that discussion previously, and kind of the intent was, I guess the challenge is, how do you enforce not allowing somebody to park on the street, but it's quite right, anybody to park on the street. But to kind of counteract that, you're forcing the owner or the operator to have an off-street parking designated, so that way, if it does become an issue, you can say, hey, get on the street and park in the driveway.
Yeah.
Or your parking space, whatever it might be.
All right, so we're going to do accessory, we're going to do owner-occupied. For R2, if the owner lives next door in one of the units, are you okay with the other side being an SDR?
Yes.
You didn't hear that.
Short-term.
I'm sorry, short-term. I apologize.
I mean, I think the idea of the license permit not transferable is-
Yes.
And then, I guess, getting back to the same rental period, I think the intent, or at least when we, when we had the discussion initially, I remember the intent was per unit, like if you were renting a, like in your case, if you're renting a bedroom or a room, then anybody that's occupying that space would be under the same rental period. But if they had, say it was a large, larger house, and you had two different units, you know, you wouldn't force necessarily the other unit guest to be under that's under the same rental. It would just be per unit, not per structure.
Right. So you don't like the last one?
Well, unless we clarify, unless it's in there now, I mean, I think you would say, in the same unit, they have to be under the same rental period, but not necessarily per structure or address. It should be per rental unit.
No, I agree with that. That's why I was getting confused with, yeah.
So-
I guess in the R1, I mean, would we want to just prohibit short-term rentals in R1? I'm just, I'm just asking, I mean, it sounds like we're trying to set it up, so it's going to be very difficult to do. I mean, are we really just trying, you know, if you get an R1, we don't want short-term rentals? I haven't seen a case yet where they sued over that, but I would be concerned about it.
I mean, I think when this was first brought up to us a few years back, I think, it might even be pre-COVID, we first started talking about it. I mean, I think there were some property owners in the city that were looking at that, and I think, you know, I think at the time, anyway, council was okay with the concept of it, and felt that it was sort of a need.
I mean, honestly, I don't think it was commercialized, it didn't really- For it, I think we got a handle on a couple of them that were rowdy and or had a couple issues before we really had any regulation. I actually, town language, that denied them the right. But council ultimately passed an ordinance for them in this regard, so.
Do you know how many we have in R1 right now, or you have any idea?
No.
And are those owner-occupied, how many of them do you know?
I know one's an owner-occupied off the top of my head that we have. We don't have a lot of them that are registered. I think there are probably some that are out there in either. I know that for, at one point, you couldn't really find out where the house was unless you made a reservation. And I'm not sure if that's changed with the, you know, that process, but, you know, that's why we kind of couldn't really tell where they were, because you needed to formally make a reservation to determine. So, so for that reason, there's probably some out there that weren't aware, but there's very few that are.
So obviously, you're still in the discussion phase of this. And in phase four, we'll come back, and I'll say, based on what I heard, using the, the way I'm changing the definition, use the regulations, and we'll talk about it again. Does that work for everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So during phase one, we discussed creating a residential zoning district specifically designed for the homes and lots bounded by Miller, Lumley, Hagedorn, and Shaw, due to the compact nature of the neighborhood. Then during phase two, you had concerns about having smaller development standards, given that lots on the eastern end were larger. So as a result of that, you said, please create sub-zoning districts, so that you have smaller development standards on the R1 TC1, which is Town Center 1, and larger development standards being larger setbacks, larger lot area on the eastern end for the R1 TC2. As you see up on the table on the screen, the minimum lot area and the minimum lot width is greater in the R1 TC2 sub-zoning district, and the setbacks are larger, as I said. By incorporating this sub-zoning district with larger minimum development standards, it would be difficult for property owners to combine two lots, tear down the houses, and then put in three homes, which was what your concern was when we talked about this during phase two. However, I will say that we tried, even though we did make the standards somewhat larger, we tried to make these homes as good as we could conform.
Did we succeed on all, or are they still?
Oh, there are you that, on both sides.
Are the lots generally 55 feet wide?
Generally, they are, yes, yes.
What are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Do you want now?
What are you talking about, about conforming and non-conforming on the top of the street? Is that what you're talking about, on Miller and Lumley?
See the square with the blue outline?
Yeah, that's the-
That's the area we're talking about.
That's the area we're talking about, and most of them are conforming in terms of lot width, lot area. But if you look at the R1 TC1, like the corner lots, like at the corner of Lumley and Hagedorn, that one's really small. And even with the Jeep's lot area that we have in your R1 TC1, it's going to be non-conforming. Keep in mind that your existing non-conforming regulations for non-conforming lots allow you to build on it. So unlike some communities where having a non-conforming lot would preclude you from building or rebuilding if there was a fire or something like that, your lot, your standards already do that. And the only change we made to them as a part of this update was you defined a non-conforming lot as being deficient in area. But I just, I added to that, it could also be deficient in lot width, because I did not want there to be any confusion that if something was not just misconforming in area, but non-conforming in lot width, that they couldn't build or rebuild. So that was the only change made. But yes, with the R1 TC2, 90% of those would meet those standards.
Well, under present zoning, hardly any of those are conforming.
Under the present zoning, none of them are.
Yeah. This allows them to improve their house and get loans and, because banks won't necessarily, so yes.
Yeah, because right now, they're all zoned R1C, and the minimum lot area is 7,000 square feet. And you can see that none of those lots are conforming. Any concerns with the TC2? So we talked about this during phase two as well. Currently, and proposed, the zoning ordinance requires a minimum front setback in the R1 and the R2 districts, which is either the minimum setback for the zoning district, or it is derived from the average setback of all the homes within 300 feet. When a minimum setback is prescribed, it means the building has to be located at or behind a minimum setback. But it does not mandate where on the lot the building has to go. Recently, a home was constructed that was, that not the minimum setback, but it was constructed behind the minimum setback, and it disrupted the rhythm of the homes on that side of the street. Therefore, some community members questioned whether the placement of a new or renovated home should be more tightly controlled, such as with a maximum setback. When a maximum setback is required, buildings have to be located at or behind the minimum setback, but they cannot be located behind the required maximum setback. So when you have a minimum and a maximum setback, we're talking about the front setback, where the building goes on the lot is more tightly controlled. Does that make sense to y'all? So to address the concern that new homes should be, are being placed too far back on the lot and can disrupt that rhythm and the character of the established street, a new section was drafted for phase three based on our phase two conversations that requires a maximum setback in the R1B and the R1C districts only. Many of the city's established neighborhoods are zoned R1B and R1C, so the maximum front setback is required for those zoning districts alone. In addition to being a large swath of the city zoning that, those are also the districts that have tight lots, tight streets. And therefore, if you disrupt that street wall, it's going to be very noticeable to the character of the street. So what we are proposing is that there's a suggested max setback, that is, the minimum setback plus seven feet. So in other words, they can't go any further back than the average plus seven. Any concerns with that?
Sometimes we have owners who have created a flat lot in their backyard, are, do we somehow exempt that?
We do, yeah. The flat lots are exempted as well.
So is there, I guess, is there a waiver provision for that? My concern would be is if there, say, there's a lot that has a large tree that somebody wants to preserve, or there's, or there's some other geographic feature, or there's a utility, or there's some other site-specific issue on a lot that would affect the placement of a new structure, that we're just arbitrarily saying, well, you can't put it there because you have to meet a setback requirement. There's no, is there a provision to wa, you know, if a property owner says, well, there's a 100-year-old oak tree, I want to save it in my front yard, but I can't because I've got to cut it down so that it can meet the setback requirement?
So the only avenue that they would have, as it's currently drafted, is to seek a variance from the BOA. We could give you the ability to grant a waiver. As you know, a waiver has less, is a less of a hurdle to get over than a BOA. But I think you're right, it could be a 100-year-old tree, or, you know, a sewer line, or whatever else, I think that's a valid consideration. So my question is, so you think it's a good idea with a waiver? And you have, use the planning commission, have the ability to grant the waiver?
As long as they have some avenue of addressing that, I don't care if we do it or not. I guess I don't have a strict concern about who does it, but I think there needs to be, I can see instances where there could be extenuating circumstances, especially in Fort Thomas, where you have to ensure, you have utility issues, you have trees, you have whatever, or there could be three major geographic issues that you have to deal with. And I, would be, you know, I don't want to force a lead to a bad situation and make it any worse.
Right, you know, I agree with that.
It feels a big cumbersome to come to the planning commission for that, because it seems to me that it would be the board of adjustment, a typical variance request.
It could be, it could be. And it would, it would meet the standards that are in Paris 100 for granting a variance, which are practical difficulty and something unique about the lot, you know, a tree, or sewer connection, or whatever else. So, but what I think I would do, I mean, there are things in the ordinance that can be waived and some that can't. I think I will put a reference in here, then if you're unable to meet it in C-section, whatever, so that a homeowner, if they're looking online, sees that and knows automatically where's a place for them to go. So I'll put that reference in. Based on our previous discussions, residential contextual standards were included for the R1 and the R2 zoning districts, except for the R1 AA district. But only for single-family homes constructed on existing lots of record or parts of lots of record that exist as of August of 2024. Homes and flat lots won't be required to meet these standards. And existing lots of record means that it only applies in your established neighborhoods. When we discussed these standards last year during phase two, the unresolved issue was, should we have these contextual standards for new subdivisions like KZ Court? In terms of the standards, the front-loaded garages seem to be most of your concern when we started discussing these contextual standards back in phase one and phase two. These residential contextual standards prohibit street-facing garages on lots less than 50 feet in width, except that you could have lots that are in the lower level, when you have garages that face the street in the lower level. On lots greater than 50 feet, street-facing garages may not protrude beyond the wall of a little portion of the home, and must not occupy more than 50% of the first-floor street facade. And when permitted, street-facing garages must have some sort of design feature that mitigate the garage doors. The primary entrance has to face the street of the home. The side of, and your side should incorporate architectural dual detailing and windows like the front. And then the zoning administrator reviews new homes for compliance with the residential contextual standards when you apply a building permit, and the DRB has the ability to grant a waiver if necessary. But our essential question is, should these standards apply to homes in new subdivisions? There was a lot of discussion about that during phase two, I think, basically because you can just review KZ Court, and we've punted them till now. What do you think?
Your car inside garage entrances, just automatically, that's another 20-foot to your lot in order to get that, which-
Then you have more driveway.
You do. And your lots have to be wider, various other things. And so, and keep in mind, when we talked about this in the past, it really was thinking about established neighborhoods. Like, did you want someone to tear down a house? And to use something my husband said about a house he saw recently, that's a garage with an entry door attached, right? And that's all you see from the street is the garage. So your concern was, your thought process was, when we were having these discussions, is, you know, is a policy concern for us in a new subdivision if the whole street is dominated by garages? As opposed to, it's obviously a policy choice in your established neighborhood, if a house is torn down, and what replaces it is a garage door.
I wonder how many really new subdivisions there might be.
I think that's a valid question.
You know, let's think about that. I think we're talking KZ Court, and that may be the last one.
I think we had enough, what I recall from our discussion last year, I think there was enough concerns with some of these issues where, even with, you were talking about, like the side of the side, well, depending on the orientation of the building, do you want any windows on the west side of the?
And that's a guidance, that's not a requirement.
Right, so, I mean, I could see where there could be guidance documents, but I don't see these as being strict requirements.
For new subdivisions?
For new subdivisions.
Yeah.
There were a couple of issues. I kind of think the entrances on the front side is an important thing, but the garage doors, yeah, definitely, that, that's on us.
Yeah, I see with the building orientation, I thought that we did pretty much say that-
That you have to do.
You have to do that. But in terms of the massing of the garages and the windows, and architecturally, I think that we didn't want to dictate.
All right, so what am I, I think I'm not understanding what you want for new subdivisions.
So the standards other than, I guess, the building orientation really wouldn't, there wouldn't be any flexibility to it.
Okay, so building orientation only in new subdivisions?
Do we want to have something about the architectural feature, if you do have garage doors, or you don't, we don't care?
I don't know, I think that's up to the kind of the architects to figure it out, especially if it's a new construction, because you're going to be all new construction. It's not like it's a tear-down in your-
Disrupting the neighborhood.
Right.
Established neighborhood.
And then going forward, if it's an HOA, they have to have standards, what kind of doors they have to have to replace them?
Yes, that's true, that's true. So I'm going to start right now, and somebody with the chair? And ask that any community comment on the single-family and two-family district regulations that we've discussed so far.
I have a question that kind of goes back from before, that when you were talking about the rentals. Is someone allowed to buy a house as an investment and rent it to the same family for two years?
Yes. Yes. Right now, they are, and in the future, they would be able to.
So the only difference with the VRVO is the 29 days?
Right, the difference with the VRVO is that it's a constant rental by different folks. But yes, someone can always rent their home.
I mean, what, I don't even like this question, but it's just come up on the news all the time, it's really directed to Kim, and now she's directed to the board. The big buzzword is squatters.
Is what?
Squatters. Squatters, that people come in and they just don't leave. I mean, it's one of the craziest things I could have never envisioned.
Yeah, the forcible container laws are, they're difficult. Certainly, I think a lot of landlords will tell you that they're in favor of the tenant to a great degree. But I think what you're talking about is an issue. They've got to go to court, they've got to get them evicted and get them done out.
Right. Throwdown is the word, is what I keep hearing, that they cannot legally make them leave. Whether they have legitimately, no contract, no rental agreement, or nothing. They say they do, and they're there. The one story I was hearing, of course, is your divorce. They were there three years.
Unless, yeah, and I've heard those crazy stories. I've never been privy to one. I've helped a lot of people with those types of situations and have never experienced that. You know, my, my thought is maybe they're accepting rent at different times during the process, and that starts it over. But, you know, I, so I can't speak to that.
I just didn't know if any of these VRVO regulations even come close to, I don't know how long you could be in place then you're allowed to squat. I had a squatting from day one, but...
You can, it could be an oral rental lease, and you pay monthly, and they still have to go through the process to get you out.
So there's no way to prevent that?
No.
Do you know what it's supposed to be, I mean, how long? How, I've never determined from my youth squatters rights, but that was different than what's happening today. Now, I think that's a...
You've got to give a notice period. I think ours is maybe 30.
30 days?
Yeah, most of them, some are seven, most of them are 30. And then it, but it doesn't go that quick. It, it's a 60, 90, 100, 20-day process to get you flat off those.
If they don't pay rent, it's seven days. Give them a seven-day rent notice. Just don't accept the rent. And see, that's why they keep staying there, someone keeps accepting the rent.
And they don't accept partial rent?
They partial rent, and then you can't, and then you can't...
Three stories, they're not for rent. Somebody goes to work, and he comes home, and somebody's living in their house. And they would take...
Well, in that scenario, you're talking about trespassment. You call the lease and give them their nap. No, I'm telling you that.
I understand that could be the law. But I'm just saying, I mean, if it's not a story, then I don't know why it's on the news every single night. You know, the stories of people who...
We can't do anything, we can't do anything that we're doing.
I have a few comments on what you all are talking about. The number one comment is, it's helpful as a community member. One question's come up, like the one that Elisa just asked, you know, Dave, who had said that, when you were talking about the garage orientation. It would be helpful as a community member if perhaps it would be not necessarily a roll call code, vote, but if it could be maybe, is anybody opposed? Is everybody in favor? Because, you know, Dave, you said, I don't want this, I don't want that. I'd love to hear individually what everybody else thinks. So I'm just wondering, procedurally, Tim, would it be okay when Elisa's asking a definitive question like that? If she could possibly say, who's in favor, who's opposed? Or is anybody opposed, if we do that? Rather than all onto the internet, just heads going up and down and one person making a decision? That's what it looks like from my perspective.
They can do it however they want. We're not in a posture where we're passing things procedurally and legally at this point. How they want to conduct their meeting, they can, they can do that.
Would that be okay with you, Dave?
Well, I mean, usually I'll refer to everybody and ask if there's further comments or questions.
But I guess what happens is sometimes, through this entire process, actually, it appears that one person's driving the decision for the group. Right, and maybe Elisa just buttoned it up by saying, anybody opposed?
I mean, I don't have a problem with Elisa asking if anybody has questions or is opposed, but we're not really voting on anything. We're not, we're not going on the record individually for...
It would just make it easier for this whole thing. And then number two, talking about the short-term rental properties, and the reason I brought up that ordinance, under the accessory uses on page, I don't know if this is what page it is, 210, Section 5.1, Page 6, are listed all the different planks of the accessory uses for short-term rentals. And I wanted to bring up number one, that there are communities around here that don't allow short-term rentals. Edgewood is one of them, I believe. New York City just banned Airbnb's, I think in December of 2020.
Oh, no, what they do is they require that they have to be owner-occupied. They did not ban those.
Well, bingo. Because with that ordinance, what I've been told by City Council is the ordinance, the one that I brought up that talks about the accessory use shall clearly be incidental and subordinate to the use of a dwelling unit for residential purposes. Elisa, maybe I'm looking wrong, but I don't see that on page 220 or 221. Is that something you're going to be adding into the discussion we have tonight?
That would be the definition of short-term rental, and it is in the definitions chapter.
And the reason that this is important, though, is because I can see council members telling me that their understanding is that, like, for example, a Southview, for example, that someone could just not buy a home and always have that as a, as a short-term rental, which is an issue you all just talked about, I believe. That they actually have to live there, that it's actually an accessory use or subordinate to, to someone actually living there. And we're talking about, like you said, you could put a house in the middle, and you could have a house on each side, but the houses on each side, or the attachments on each side would have to be exactly this subordinate to that. And I understand you hear that in the definitions.
Correct, so that is the definition it is, and it is in the definitions chapter.
So that would need to be as one of the planks of page 200 or 21?
No. You'd have to, the way a zoning ordinance works is the term is defined, and then you look at the definitions for that.
So will it still, that ordinance still exist?
No, after this is done, it will change. And we are going to continue to talk about short-term rentals in other zoning districts. But what I believe, the commission, if I'm just speaking, let me know, was that they wanted very much to keep it in the R1 and the R2 as accessory and subordinate and incidental to it being a development, a dwelling unit. And one of the keys to doing that is requiring that it be owner-occupied at the time that it's being rented as a short-term rental.
And that would be one of the planks that will be under, one of the sub, under G of, I don't know what it is, but page 210?
Yes, that will be a restriction there once Phase Four comes out.
Thank you. And then you're talking about perhaps limiting that in an R3 situation, or even an R2. I have a son that lived in New York City, and it was an absolute nightmare. In their apartment building, they allowed, like you're talking about, no restrictions at all, any short-term rentals. And that's where they were in Hobeck, New Jersey, so not New York City. But what happened was that they had, you know, they had kids. So just because you live in an apartment doesn't mean that's any different than you living in a house. You might not want, or you don't want, I think a lot of people don't want, transient as your next-door neighbor, or there's maybe four units on the floor, and three of them are short-term rentals, and you're not. So I would just ask you to consider that when you start talking about short-term rentals in the R3 and R4 districts. And the last thing I want to say is, this, this whole short-term rental thing, from what I'm looking back and looking at minutes, because I wasn't involved then, I don't see that Fort Thomas citizens were ever asked if that was something they even wanted. So I don't know if this is the council decision, public safety's a policy decision. But boy, I think it would sure be interesting to find out what people in Fort Thomas want, because, Tim, I agree with you. I can imagine that the majority of R1 owners want short-term rentals at all.
Yeah, at our meeting a year ago, or whatever that was, we had residents coming in who were doing short-term rentals and wanted them in their, in their own.
Was it more than one? Because in the minutes, it's only reflected that one resident on it.
There was, there was one who came in, but I think we talked about a couple more than one.
And I think there was some, there was some folks on council and at the administration that said that they had been approached by several people that wanted to, and they felt that it was a community need and wanted us to address it, to, you know, to regulate it, but not, but permit it, basically.
But not the majority of people?
From council, they felt that it was an important need at the time.
And that was a previous council of what we have now, too?
I had two councils ago, I don't remember now. And then, like I said, we started talking about this pre-COVID. I mean, this was 78 years ago.
I went back and looked at the minutes, and I could see where it came from. But I, I mean, I just wanted to point out, the exact same time Edgewood was considering this, the citizens somehow found out about it, and there was a big response. You know, they had WCPL and everybody over there, and they decided not to pass it. So I do think it's an issue that's out there for discussion by a greater majority. I understand that you feel that, you know, the ordinance is there, and you're bound by it, and I can understand that.
I think that the City Council wanted to pass the ordinance licensing them, but we didn't have, but it wasn't permitted under zoning. So in order for the two ordinances to work together, we had to address it somehow, and that's kind of how I involved.
It looks to me like it was your intent when you addressed it that that would be an owner-occupied building and not something that just someone would buy.
Essentially, yes. That's what we were trying, we don't want it to be commercialized.
And that, that was for both R1 and R2, and for the multifamily units?
It was for everything, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, I just have a question or a statement or two. I agree, we don't have enough parking on our streets as it is. So that would be important, that people have to park on their own street. And I heard somebody say, why do we care in R3? And I know we're going to get to that, but we do care in R3 in the same manner that, and I would also say, Elisa, what is the zone on Hawthorne where the zoning was changed there along Alexandria?
Recently, or...
Not recently, or what is the zone right there?
At the corner of US 27 and Hawthorne, lots that front on Alexandria Pike are zoned R3.
R3, and then what's the ones right, like, further down Hawthorne?
I think R1C, but I'll pull out now.
And the only reason I'm going to say this is, you know, again, those are residential areas. And, you know, when she talks about, again, I want to welcome all people to our town. But when you have neighborhoods and small kids walking four blocks away from Woodville Elementary, we don't want a bunch of transient, crazy stuff going on in our neighborhood. We don't want the traffic, we don't want the parking issues, and we want it to be a safe place. And we know our neighbors, we know all 34 of our neighbors on our street, and so do the other neighbors on their street. This isn't like, you know, some city where we don't know our neighbor. And so that's why we call it a neighborhood. And we, we do want you to protect our neighborhoods. And I don't want to be disrespectful when I say this. I think it's nice to look and see what other neighborhoods are doing. But respectfully, we don't really care what other neighborhoods are doing because we have to do what's right for our neighborhood, and based on who we are and what we are. And so I would just, I know we still have to stay within the law, but I just think, you know, keeping that top of mind is very important. And I just appreciate you guys considering that as you move forward.
And to answer your question, the lots that front on Hawthorne are zoned R1C?
R1C, okay. We'll be talking about that later.
No, well, R1C is what we were just talking about.
Oh, okay, so...
So, and again, unless I've misunderstood, the planning commission, they are very committed to it being an accessory use in those R1 districts, and whether it being owner-occupied and all of those things.
Thank you.
But again, as Peggy pointed out, that is ultimately a decision for the City Council.
Yes.
When they pass the ordinance.
Thank you for explaining that.
Is R1A considered in that? I keep seeing R1B.
So you have an enormous number of R1 districts. So you have R1A, R1AA, R1B, R1C, and R1D. And because that's a mouthful, we just say R1. And anything that...
I thought I saw R1B and R1C.
Right, but, but in that particular case, we were talking about the mandated maximum front setback for R1B and R1C.
So there's not plans for R1As? I know R1A is a big lot.
R1, R1A and R1AA are the larger lots. And yes, they are not being required to have a maximum front setback because they are in neighborhoods that don't necessarily have them today. But when we were talking about R1, and we just used the word R1...
That, that makes, that makes no sense. It's just when I saw B and C, I'm like, how about A?
Right, because R1A and R1AA are, they run with very different characters. But, you know, Hawthorne, all of your older streets are either zoned R1B or R1C.
Thank you. Just one more question. The fine if a person violates the short-term rentals is $500. Is there any way to sweeten that deal a little bit, make it higher?
I mean, that's, that's, that's in the municipal ordinance, correct?
It's actually in the regulations for...
The fine amount?
The fine amount is, and it's twice what the fine is for all the others in the ordinance violations, as it's currently.
Wasn't it just for a certain violation of that?
I think it's any violation, we'll find out.
I mean, is there, I guess, is there a comparable fine amount listed in the municipal ordinance governing short-term rentals?
Oh, you're right. The tenured provision of this ordinance.
I don't believe so, not a little more.
I mean, it almost seems to me that that should be more in the municipal ordinance than in the zoning. Don't you agree? I mean, what do you think, Tim?
Why do you feel that way there?
Well, if, if all the other regular, the licensing is through the municipal ordinance, you violate the license terms, then it seems to me that's where the fine would come in, not necessarily from a zoning perspective.
I don't have a problem with it being here. I think you can put it either slot.
Or you can put it in both, right? You'd say if you don't get a license, if you don't get a license as a, and that's violation of the city code, that could be a separate fine.
Well, as I said, if there's no, if there's no penalty for violating the license.
The license itself, the rest is the material, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, kind of, yeah.
But shouldn't there's a whole lot more in that ordinance than just licensing? You know, there's noise in there, there's, you know, not getting, a lot of this stuff is in the municipal ordinance that Elisa has now put into zoning. So in the, in the ordinance, it says that any provision this chapter, which is a lot of provisions, will be subject to the fine of $500. I mean, $500 is probably a drop in the bucket for some of these folks who are doing short-term rentals. And I just wonder if there'd be any appetite for increasing that fine? And is this the appropriate bill for that, or if that's City Council?
Yeah, I think it's more of a council question. I don't necessarily disagree, I just don't know that it's really our...
Perfect.
Perfect.
The residential cluster development overlay district is currently in your zoning ordinance and will be continued into the Phase Three and Phase Four as well, pretty much verbatim to what you currently have. Right now, both in your current ordinance and in the Phase Three, what's expressly permitted in uses is attached single-family and detached single-family. In order to clarify the permitted list of uses, I'm asking if we should add two-family dwellings. The definition of attached single-family does not preclude only having two units attached. And the residential cluster overlay district was applied to the homes on Alexander Circle when those were rezoned. And clearly, some of these homes are two-family dwellings. So it seems appropriate to expressly add two-family dwellings to the list of permitted uses, just for clarity, within the residential cluster overlay district. But I wanted to bring it to you to make sure you were okay with that.
Where are the RCDO zones now?
So there is one over Alexander Court, I mean, there was another one...
Grand Lakes?
The Grand Lakes, yeah.
Great, I miss the forest.
And are there, are there two, are they, so are there only two units?
I don't want to say there's certainly, it feels like there could be two, some of those.
Yeah, but clearly, the picture that I have up there is, you know, it's Alexander Circle, and that's... West of the Mar. Yeah, I think Grand Lakes, most of the Mar, one or two.
The first voting is tied.
I guess the only thing I was going to say is at the end of your deposition there, where you talk about the 20% slope. Why do you have to say, is the Fort Thomas comprehensive plan or the current comprehensive plan is up? Can you just say you see a 20% slope period?
Sure, we can, you could. So what you see on the screen is your existing, I just took, because we were not making any changes to the residential cluster development overlay district, changes to the residential cluster development overlay district, I just took your existing language.
Yeah, I would just end it at the twenty percent because what if we inaccurately defined it somewhere back in the day, or, or something's changed, and I would just leave it at twenty percent.
Okay. Y'all care if I add two-family dwellings?
No, no, pretty fine, so.
We couldn't hear you say that, what, what did you guys say? Sorry. Did you say okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So during Phase 2, we discussed the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district. The overlay district is the zoning of the district dedicated to the protection of the traditional development patterns and neighborhood character along Fort Thomas Avenue. The regulations promote and protect that single-family character for the existing single-family detached and two-family dwellings along Fort Thomas Avenue. They propose that the overlay district overlays parcels that are zoned R1B, R1C, and R3. If the parcels are occupied by single-family detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, or residential care facilities for persons with disabilities. Therefore, if a parcel is zoned R3 and currently occupied by a multifamily dwelling, the parcel would not be subject to the regulations in the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay zoning district. You will notice that I put on the screen a question mark next to R1A, and depending upon our determination and your determination on the boundaries of the district, there may be some parcels that are R1A on the northern end of town. So in terms of what, the types of improvements on lots that would be applicable for these standards, it's all new construction and any substantial additions. In this case, a substantial addition is defined as an alteration to the front of residential property or any alteration to the side of a residential property that is visible for Fort Thomas Avenue. Those would be the types of changes on a lot that would then have to be part of this overlay district.
Can we go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Where you say substantial additions means any alteration. So if somebody wanted to paint their shutters, is that an alteration, or is that not an alteration?
Good question. Yeah, I mean, do they have a-
When you say any alteration, it seems a little comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, we need to think about that.
You know, same with the side.
Definitely, okay, thank you. Well, we discussed this overlay district during Phase 2. The district regulations included mandates for the front setback of the principal dwelling unit, building height restrictions, garage orientation requirements, carport placement, roof design, building orientation, porches, and required transparency on the front facade. These were the site and design elements that you felt were, when we initially started discussing the district, were important to define that residential character along the avenue. And when I talked to community members, Fort Thomas Avenue is not Fort Thomas Avenue, it's the avenue. Because that, that, that in and of itself says how much it means to people, that they lost the whole proportion, it's just the avenue. However, as we discussed these regulations during Phase 2, y'all expressed some concerns about some of the proposed regulations and asked for them, some to be modified and others to be discarded. As we move through the next several slides, I will remind you of the proposed regulations that you discussed and what your changes were. And when we get to the end of this, the question's going to be, does this really make sense now, that we have eliminated any of the restrictions to continue with this district? We'll get there in a second.
I couldn't hear that last sentence, I'm sorry.
So the question will be at the end of this, because we started out, during Phase 2, with a whole laundry list of requirements for homes on Fort Thomas Avenue, homes in two families. When we went through the discussions during Phase 2, there was some discomfort in some of those standards, and some of them were modified, and some of them were deleted. And so what I said to the board was, at the end of this process, the question's going to be, does the standard that remain, does that meet your goals, objectives for this district? So in terms of the front setback, new construction and additions to the front of homes along Fort Thomas Avenue will be required to have a front setback within three feet of the avenue, to all homes within three hundred feet. And as we talked about earlier, that will prevent homes from being located too far back of the lot, and will maintain that existing residential character for the front setback.
Somehow we make the point that that's three hundred feet on that side of the street?
We do, and that's actually very clear in your existing language, it says, yeah, same side of the street, within the same block, in fact. I just didn't put all that on the slide. As we've been talking about, both during Phase 2 and Phase 3, garage placement on a house is one of the key factors that defines the character of a street. This portion of North Fort Thomas Avenue would look and feel very differently if all of these homes had garages fronted on the streets instead of porches. The text expresses a preference for detached garage, saying you should have one, and requires detached garages to be located to the rear of the dwelling. And there seemed to be some general agreement for these regulations during Phase 2. Again, for, uh, street-facing garages are prohibited, except for those that are below grade and are located in the basement. We have limited the width of the single-car garage to no more than twelve feet, and this change makes the regulation much more prescriptive and seem to be generally preferred during Phase 2. The regulation originally said they just had to be a single-car wide, and there was some discomfort that that left too much wiggle in, we said twelve feet was then priced in for the face-to-face drag.
One thing I was gonna say, I think we had some discussion about the, the low-grade definition, like, you know, at least the one on the left, and that it's in there, technically, if that's at grade, not below grade, and the house is elevated, so.
And actually, and we did, again, for simplicity on the slide, I did make it more clear that it could be in the basement, and below the habitable portion of the home. So it is much more clear in the text, I just didn't put it on the slide, because we did exactly have that, that discussion. Attacked psycho garages are permitted, provided they don't protrude in front of the habitable portion of the dwelling unit. And again, this is just solely along the avenue. Rear-loaded garages are permissible, and both of those regulations were unchanged from Phase 2. Like as Jared pointed out earlier, you put it to the side or the back, you watch, it's wider. We spent quite a bit of time discussing metal carports during Phase 2. And there seemed to be some consensus during Phase 2 that freestanding metal carports were the most concerning, so the regulation was revised, as you see on the screen, so that freestanding metal carports had to be located entirely behind the principal structure. But as we said during Phase 2, portico share are allowed. As in Phase 2, a minimum of fifteen percent of the area of each facade that faces Fort Thomas Avenue must be windows or main entrance doors, and the text encourages the detailing of windows and doors that complement the street facade. But again, this is guidance, not a requirement. The significant revisions from Phase 2 to Phase 3 included modifications or deletions for the following things: building height, roof design, porches, raised entries, and similar considerations. So these were all the things that you made major changes to. In Phase 2, the building height could not exceed the average height of the principal structures on the lots on either side. This regulation was deleted for Phase 3, so the building height will just be regulated by the underlying, so main district.
Why did you do that?
Because you thought it was, um, overreaching to, as I remember the discussion, to then dictate building height, more so than the underlying of the district.
I think we were trying to, because if somebody had pitch roof, and, you know, we're reading in the flat roof, and you could have a flat roof that's taller, or-
The Phase 2 draft regulations required roofs to have a pitch between six twelve and twelve tall, and shared roofs were only allowed if they were attached to the wall of a home. These regulations were changed, as you see on the screen, and basically, the pitch of the roof is no longer regulated, but flat roofs are permitted. If you wanted to soften this requirement a little bit, you could say, you know, if someone wanted to, you know, have a flat roof over a covered porch or a deck, that that would be permissible. Because right now, flat roofs at all are not allowed. What you're feeling on softening it a little bit, or just the way it is.
I could see a flat roof on a porch potentially.
Especially if it's on the-
Definitely, a deck as well.
Especially if it's on the rear of the house.
Yeah, especially. I mean, it will have some kind of pitch a little bit, just to get the water off, but basically-
Well, sometimes it does, but-
I guess, you would think.
So what if somebody wanted to put one on, is this a variance to get that done?
No, that, this is not, this is not something-
You're talking about flat roofs on-
Decks.
Or porches. Got it.
Thank you.
Right, but this is not an item where you could get a variance, because in the state of Kentucky, a variance is essentially a dimensional requirement, and so therefore they would not be able to do that. So it would be, it's a design requirement.
What would happen if you have an existing house that does have a flat roof, and you have, and you have to do some maintenance, or you have to re-contraite a portion of your house, what happens? Because there are some that have flat roofs.
Yeah, there are some that, that have, there's actually one that-
You're gonna make them conforming.
Yeah, they will, they just become, let's do something about that. It's like existing-
Yeah, can we define a flat roof?
Yeah, we can do that.
Probably less than the six twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what we're most concerned about, I guess, is what we can see from the street, so if we're talking about a deck in the rear, I mean-
Could be a porch, though, on quite a house.
Yeah, and, and we've seen that, right? Right, put the flat roof over the front porch, and that's, that does change the nature of the dwelling, as well as the character of the street within that block.
Especially like, especially if it's a balcony on it. Like a walkout from something. Does that, does that make it a balcony, or does that make it a roof?
Right.
I mean, I, I, I don't know.
So what, what's pointing out is, is a good one, actually, and, because you have homes where there is a flat roof on the porch, and then railing around it that is, you know, access from the second floor, at the, at the deck, or whatever else. So this would, I mean, we could easily change it to say if it's in the rear, they would be allowed, but what's written here would preclude some of what you exist and have, and some of the things that you have that have nice character to them. So I think I need to go back to the drawing board. What do you think? Okay. But you're still, your policy guidance, to me, is still, for the main roof of the principal structure, no flat roofs.
Right.
We just needed to, just need to say this back. Am I?
Correct.
I'm not agreeing. Dave looks confused.
I was just thinking, if you have a flat roof, but then if you have a parapet, that could be architecturally enhanced, then you would never see the roof, period.
Right, but if you think about, but if you think about it, if you have, and there is one home on Fort Thomas Avenue that has precisely what you're talking about, a flat roof with a parapet, and it looks odd, it is definitely jarring to the eye as you're, as you're going down.
I'm not saying it could be, but it's, depending on the design, it couldn't be.
This is sort of how we started down this road of getting rid of the whole six twelve, twelve twelve requirement, and then there seemed to be some concern that you didn't want flat roofs, because it could end up being different. So here's my question to you then, I'm still hearing discomfort, do we want to regulate roof pitch at all?
Yes.
In what way?
What do you think? I mean, I like how this is written, except I think we need to include some flat roofs in there, because again, was such a good point.
Look, I mean, can we put something like we're doing with our setbacks, and say, character of the, you know, the surrounding building, or I'm not sure, I don't know how you say average pitch of the roof, but-
So what we used to say, I mean, what we said for the porches was, if your, the homes on either side had a porch, you had to have one. And we ultimately, we got rid of that. I mean, but I don't, I mean, there are not enough homes on the street that have flat roofs for it to, to use that kind of a standard. I mean, under what circumstances would a flat roof be okay to you?
Well, I do think the porch, you know, if it-
And we can deal with that, we can do with the porch.
If you can occupy it, or, you know, you can, you know, use it.
Because we could simply just put an adjective on here that says that the principal roof has to, can't be flat, and that way you've, you've solved that problem. And we can add, say, it can't be seen from the front of the street, you solved that problem. But the fundamental problem is, do we want to prohibit flat roofs?
I guess it's our goal to prevent somebody from changing the whole character of a street by putting a flat roof going, or, you know, film in where you've got pitch roof all around it. I mean, do we care otherwise?
That's the only reason we care.
I mean, I don't really care strongly about it, I guess, one way or the other, necessarily. I think, architecturally, I think you can make flat roofs that can look nice, they can also look not nice, the same with a pitch roof, the same with a- Well, and I guess even on a main roof, you could, you could turn a flat roof into some kind of deck area or whatever else on the top of it.
And, and there's nothing wrong with that, but it is not the character of Fort Thomas Avenue.
I agree.
Yeah.
We need to define flat roof, because obviously, definition in here, and so you've put six inches in twelve feet, and you got something that's not flat. If we really wanted a, when they almost flat roof, we need to define it.
Yeah, I'll do that, if we decide that's where we want to go. But I'm not, I'm still not hearing the whole, I'm not getting a, a vibe of where we want to go with flat wood roofs.
I'm not sure that I care, that, that somebody wants to put a flat roof in.
Do people care?
We've got a lot, two families, four families, right at the two bends in the road on the avenue, that had flat roofs, they're all flat. Now, some of them have come back and put roofs on the-
But keep in mind, if it's, if it's an R3 and is occupied by multifamily, it's not, it's not subject to this. It's only if it's R1, R2 occupied by single-family, I mean, or, if it's an R3, it has to be occupied by single-family or a two-family.
But because, like, your house in the middle, all those, maybe they have, like, you know, that's- Yeah, I mean- I'm trying to think through the whole thing. I mean, I, I, I can't remember specifically, but I know there's a few Spanish Revival houses in town that have flat roofs, that look very nice, that, you know, I think, you know, I would hate to prohibit somebody from recreating something like that, just because, I, I mean, to me, it almost seems like, well, if you have a flat roof, maybe then you are required to put a parapet on, or some ornament, you know, some architecture one hand, you can't just have a very shallow graded roof with shingles in a gutter. Like I said, it's all in the, behind, the eye of the designer and the builder there. I don't think inherently flat roofs are, I believe, but they can be.
I mean, I don't need to beat the dead horse, but I'm not sure what I want to do.
I think we should not have the flat roofs on the principal residential buildings, except if there was a deck, and possibly a walkout, like for the second floor, that would be, because that design may be beautiful, if you think about it, some of the old colonial homes have that.
Oh, they do.
And it looks gorgeous, and that is, we have some of those homes on the street. So that's where I would go. I know.
So-
I know, I don't know how you can write that.
Well, we'll figure out something, but I think what I'm hearing, you know, for the residential contextual standards that are in, for the R1 districts that are aligned with, the exceptions can go to the DRB, and we don't have that provision for these. So I think at the very least, we need to put that in.
I, I think that would be a good idea, but I think that would, I think that would address some of my concerns, because if you had an architect that did a really good job with a, with a flat roof or a semi-flat roof, but architecturally, there would be no objection to it, at least give somebody the ability to do it.
Right, so I think we need to do that at the very least. If I put that in, and qualify flat roofs, as Pam said, which is, you know, can't be seen from the, you know, Fort Thomas Avenue, if the principal roof can't be flat, those kinds of things, and so we can go to the DRB for a waiver, are we okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay. And y'all had asked me, sometimes during the lecture, to go to the designer review board and talk to him about what your expanded roles are, and I did do that back in November. And so while, while we specifically did talk about this, we did talk about the residential contextual standards, and that their only role would be if someone wanted a waiver or an exception, and they were okay with that. And I don't, but we need to inform them of this, this is not a huge change. So again, as we were just talking about with the porches, the Phase 2 draft said that if a porch was on either side, you had to have one. We got rid of that, y'all felt very uncomfortable with- We got rid of that. Y'all felt very uncomfortable with requiring porches. We also had long conversation about whether or not front porches can be enclosed. And we retained that in existing front porches that are not enclosed could not be existing front porches that are either screened in or glassed in can remain and can be maintained, provided that they're, they're clear. So that's, that change. We required, at that point in time, we included guidance about if you had a raised entry on the homes on either side of you, you need to have a raised entry as well. You thought this guidance was unnecessary, so it will be struck from, it has been struck for the phase three draft. And then we also had long conversations about any solar energy systems that were visible on the front facade needed to be integrated, meaning that they were some sort of the building components themselves, like these shingles or siding or whatever else, and that's how you wanted to handle that. So that's what is now in Fort Thomas Avenue overlay.
Could you just clarify real quick what you mean by the parallel to the front setback line?
Yeah. So in order to give it a little bit more definitive, if it's, if a building material is parallel with the front setback line or substantially so, then any sort of integrated solar system has to, any sort of solar system has to be integrated, meaning it is the wall panel itself, it is the roof itself, and basically what this does is prevent anyone from attaching a solar panel to something that is visible from the street, whether it's the front facade or the front solar roof, those kinds of things.
You'd say it shall be permitted on the front. Or you're saying only integrated?
Yes, only integrated, shall be permitted.
Also, a house on the avenue facing east and west, though, nobody's gonna put a solar panel on this.
Probably not. But only integrated ones are permitted.
But, you know, they could, they could, well, I guess all I'm saying is that kind of the opposite of that. They could put integrated solar panels on the other roof panel.
Oh, sure.
It's just kind of the way it reads, as long as it, you can only put them on the front. I guess is the way I would interpret it when I first saw that.
Well, maybe I need to make it a little longer.
Like, only integrated, shall be permitted?
Yeah, I'll ask what I.
I, I know what your intent is, but it reads a little bit declarative there, saying you can only put it on the front.
I'll make it a little longer. So as you requested during phase two, the provisions that you see on the screen expressly require the maintenance of homes along the avenue is included. Now, this is, I mean, a situation where there always you have to maintain your home, but you felt it was important to include explicitly on the avenue. I think that's what you said. So to wrap up, what's left after everything that we have gotten rid of? You still have a mandated front porch. There are still regulations for garage orientation and placement. We are regulating the placement of restaying carports. We're doing something with flat roofs. We're regulating building orientation. We're prohibiting enclosed porches if they don't already exist. We're mandating transparency on the front facade and protective maintenance is required. And I will add to this, the ability to go to the DRB and get a waiver.
And I was just gonna, like, the enclosed porches, we're not providing a rear structure, right?
No, just a front. Yeah, that's the only thing that this, this applies to. So, the question is, do these revised regulations reflect your goals and priorities for this district?
Yes.
Awesome. Now for the hard question. Let's turn to the geographic boundaries of Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district. That was a topic that we talked about a lot during phase two. So to recap, in phase two, we discussed the overlay district starting at the north end roughly at Johnson Elementary in Quincy Hall. But again, it's only those parcels occupied by single family, two family. It picks back up at Shalafontain Place down to Goodwork Avenue. On South Fort Thomas Avenue, the district goes from Bigwack to the Cincinnati Building. The district continues south of the midway and terminates at US twenty seven. So during phase two, much of the discussion was how far north it should go. And Rossford Avenue was, was discussed. So the question is, should the, you know, overlay district be extended north to Rossford Avenue or some other point further north?
I believe we actually, we talked about taking it to Covert Run, but.
Well, we sort of were all over the board.
Florida Rossford.
So, and, and, and. To use that pun. Well, the further north you get, there's more variation, there's, you know, larger lots where it's larger setbacks, the further, that's sort of what happens the further north you go. And that was sort of part of our discussions.
And Johnson is really not anywhere near the furthest point.
No, so now we're, one of the, one of the places we talked about was Rossford, and that was essentially where St. Catherine's is. Thank you. We heard that, we heard at the end of, of the boulevard, and the covert run, as you said. So, you know, the, the key things to think about are, where are the houses close enough to the street and enough together that we need to, that we feel that we need to have those policy considerations that impact in character? Once the houses get further apart and further back from the street, then the character is less impacted if, if it changes, if it, on the front of the home.
Past covert, there aren't many homes that look like they're homes toward the middle of town, at all.
So what was that first part?
Past covert, there's not many homes that look like houses in the middle of town. They're mostly flat. I know, like, most of them are ranches. There's not too many two stories.
Yeah, that's true.
Past covert, I mean, there's a few. One got torn down and they put a modern in, very modern, like the second one on the left. As you pass covert, the second or third one on the left there. That happened in like two thousand and ten. So there's really, I don't think you should go past covert at all.
I don't think so either.
Uh-uh. I mean, Rossford might be, even if you think about past Rossford, on the left, there's a few big houses, but on the right, there's.
Once you get past Rossford.
Well, the majority of those houses, though, are still nineteen twenties, nineteenth century.
Yeah.
Vertically, they do.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
There's not really a pattern, like there is.
But you could say that if you go towards the lot, those who, in the south end, I mean, those are very vertically related to the street, they're very.
Maybe to covert.
Small lot. No, well, I don't think the lots between Seca and Covert Run are that much larger.
Yeah, the, the one at the corner of covert in North Fort Thomas, that house is very old. It has a lot of history. It may even be a historical house.
Well, the Talaparo House, just down from Seca, the oldest house in Fort Thomas.
That's what, yeah.
About eighteen ten.
Right. So maybe we want to go to covert.
That would be my opinion, I think.
To covert.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's any, most of the stuff, nor that there's post World War Two, it's, yeah.
Right. I agree.
All right, we're going northward to Covert Run? Everybody okay with that? Awesome. Okay, so we had heard during the coffee and conversation sessions that some standards should apply to the R three properties as well along Fort Thomas Avenue. And both of these are on, speaking of a flat roof. The phase three draft already prohibits parking between the R three buildings and the front lot line. If you wish, we could include maximum front setbacks since the buildings, if they are replaced at some point in the future, would be more tightly regulated in terms of the front setback. However, keep in mind that because we have expressly prohibited parking between the building and the front lot line, it is less likely that any replacement buildings would be pushed further back on the lot. There are no design standards for these R three buildings included into the phase three draft. We could add additional regulations, certainly, certainly things like building orientation and transparency, if you would like. But this is, we didn't talk about this at all during phase two in terms of adding some sort of design standards for these R three properties. And truthfully, I would probably not put them in the overlay, I would put them in the R three district itself for R three properties that are located on Fort Thomas Avenue because it would become very cumbersome to have different sets of standards within the overlay. But, you know, I have heard this during the copies and conversations and thought I should bring it to you.
Those are totally different kinds of buildings.
They are very totally.
You'd have to have a separate set.
Yeah, yeah. And, and truthfully, the things that are most important if you're thinking about the way the avenue is that front setback. We don't want that to be changed dramatically. We certainly don't want parking between the buildings and the front lot line, which your current ordinance, you can interpret as saying that, but it's not particularly well written. So we are expressly prohibiting, prohibiting it now. But, you know, do we want to talk about setbacks and building orient, and think about this too. So if something happened to the building on local lower side and it has a, a parking lot in the back, someone could choose, if they tore this building down, to reorient the building and put the front, the, the front at the back, the back at the front, in which case, instead of looking at the dish, it would be looking at air conditioner compressors. So there, there could be some merit at some point in time, if something happens to these buildings, that I'm asking you.
I don't see that happening. I mean, you wouldn't rent those units, how they look like you're saying.
Actually, you would.
I mean, I'm, you want to say, I, I want to live in that place that has nothing but HVAC units?
And the reason I say that is because it happens all over the country, and you don't see it because you are entering the building from the back of the parking lot.
I mean, I could see somebody putting an entrance from the rear, I don't know if that, if they're, but I could see somebody putting the primary entrance from the parking lot.
I think they probably have.
I mean, I have just said, yeah.
I know, I think they're all in the front. Yeah, I mean, they just have another entrance in the front, I wonder.
But, but if you were to, yeah, you would have to necessarily.
No, you wouldn't have to. And, and maybe I was being a little tongue in cheek when I said air conditioner compressors, and I apologize for that. I have seen it done, where they literally oriented the building toward the parking lot in the back and air conditioner compressors come up front. But I can tell, definitely tell you that if they do that at some point in time in, in the future, there will not be a door facing sidewalk.
I mean, I do think the orientation is probably a good.
Yes.
Good requirement.
What do you, what do you think? The orientation or just making sure that there is a primary entrance face faces the street?
Well, either way, yeah.
What about windows? I mean, could you require windows in the front?
And well, I think transparency is also important. Yeah, I mean, we'll do orientation, transparency, and lines.
I mean, I personally, my thought would be is that you would require a pedestrian connection. If there is a street front entrance and there is a door, you, you, you need, instead of just having this sidewalk go around to the cargo lot in the back, that there has to be a pedestrian connection to the.
To the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk, yeah, or the driveway.
Looks like the one on the top there doesn't do that, looks like that.
That's what made me think about it.
It does, actually. It, it's, this one going forward.
It curves.
It curves and it comes out to the.
Yeah, it's, it's really close to.
Yeah.
And then how, how do those compare setback wise to what would be the average on the.
They're all sitting right on the street, the setback line. I mean, they are all in line. So even if, even when they're the ones that are next door to homes, are all the same setback line.
So if we did, you know, impose our average of the three hundred feet to the sides or whatever, that would probably be okay, you know, a similar type requirement?
We may need to go more than three hundred feet because some of these lots are wider. But yeah, we can do the maximum front setback of three feet, maximum, you know, maximum within three feet of the average. We can do transparency and entrance. So that, as I said, I'm not going to put it in the overlay district because it would be confusing to do so. But I will put it in the R three district and say that it's applicable along the avenue. At this point, we'll stop and take community comments regarding the residential coastal overlay district and the Fort Thomas Avenue overlay district.
Can I have, I have a question from page one of your packet, and these are the, the community comments that were made at this last meeting. They, will we have time to discuss, is this time to discuss these or do we do this later on? I would certainly like to discuss, but people spend a lot of time coming to those meetings. And Elisa usually starts the meeting by, you know, saying what they were, but I think some of these absolutely need for the discussion.
So the ones that are covering the central business district, the traditional business district, and all of those things are tomorrow night?
That's great. Well, I, I would like to talk a little bit tonight about the, the recommendations to remove all references to the community plan from the U D O. And the, this is one, two, three, two up from the bottom, removing the phrase "critical mass" from the intent statement for those central business districts.
So that would definitely, that's our young presentation for tomorrow.
Both of those, removing the typical, I think, I'm going.
Um, because the, all, everything about the central business district is there, as well as the issue about the, um, comment.
Perfect. So, because that's kind of a different issue than the central business district. So that will be a separate and distinct issue that will be discussed tomorrow night?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, again, along the lines of this last night at council, I mentioned that I would be passing this out to you guys tonight. Should I do that now or should I do it before you leave?
Why don't you wait until the end, unless, unless it has something specifically to do with these, the.
Oh, yeah, it does.
With the overlay district, Fort Thomas Avenue.
It, it has to do with all of them, yes.
Well, why don't you just wait till the end, unless you have a specific question about these.
That's perfect. Thank you so much.
My only question, when Elisa said, we were talking about the roofs, the flat roofs. And if I am sure correctly, there's a lot of discussion on flat roofs. The ending phrase was, you can always get a variance from the DRB.
You can go, what they are suggesting is because this is very subjective, that we could add into that the ability to go to the DRB and get a waiver.
I guess my only concern about that is that it's saying this forever and ever. We've got four hundred pages and a lot of them are saying at the end, or you can appeal it. Like, you don't really have to. These are guidelines. They're not mandates because there's, there's, there's five people who can know the rules pretty much everything. That was disgusting for three years. And that concerns me.
I mean, I think that, you know, that's the reason that we have the DRB essentially, was for these specific cases.
We were at that meeting where Elisa was telling them about their expanded duties. And several didn't know their current duties. It's not fine.
I mean, I.
It's changing our system.
I mean, that is their duty, essentially. That's what they are, that's what the intent of the DRB is, is to.
But they didn't know that.
I mean, that needs to be taken up with them. I mean, I, I think the process, you know, allowing somebody to go to get a variance, I think we, I mean, I don't think we're changing or potentially changing that process. It changes the way that the whole system works, if we try to do that.
These things have to be in here. I, John, my, my thought is, boy, sure, you're concerned to them and then we need to move on.
You can't just ask for a waiver without having a specific reason.
Right.
Why the zoning ordinance is preventing you from doing something that you need to do.
Maybe my concern is that there are two people.
And you don't just get it. I mean, you have to make that, you can't just go and get one. You have to make the point that there's something about your lot that's unique. There's, there's something about, you know, whatever, that they just don't give it to you without you having a bone by.
There are two, there are two members of the DRB who have openly said at open recorded meetings, I will never say no to a request.
I think you take that up with them and you can take it up with Matt as well. It's not, it's not a preference for us to do, for Matt to handle.
Will there be a separate meeting, Elisa, on waivers, exceptions, and modifications?
So we talked about all the administrative provisions in January. So we now turn to the Tyre Park Historic Overlay District. One community member has asked that Green Street be removed from the proposed Tyre Park Historic Overlay District. His concern that he expressed at one of the copies and conversations was the time involved in getting approval from the design review board, especially since they have a homeowners association for Green Street that is functioning and reviewing exterior changes. In the phase three draft, the DRB will review those exterior alterations which are visible from the public or private roadway for Pearson and Green. The same community, community member also expressed concerns about the DRB using the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation in order to review alterations. This community member would prefer there to be design guidelines that specifically are tailored to Greas, to Green Street. And I'm going to spend a few minutes and give you a little bit of context. And I'm going to spend a few minutes and give you a little bit of context because there's a whole lot that happened when Pearson and Green came into the city's purview. As I understand it, when the homes on Pearson and Green were originally conveyed to the homeowners in 1992, the city of Fort Thomas was listed as the developer and created a declaration creating the homeowners association and requiring that all exterior renovations be approved by the city within 60 days. But again, that was by the city, not by the DRB. The original declaration stated that the owners shall repair, maintain, and use the units in a manner which will preserve and protect and be consistent with the historic and architectural features of the exterior of the buildings. At the time that this happened in 1992, both Green and Pearson were in the same HOA. Then in 2004, Pearson split from Green. And Pearson's declaration actually says, again, that to be Fort Thomas is the developer, the developer has 30 days to review exterior changes. And this declaration states, "In recognition of the historical values of the properties, members of the association agree to maintain the exterior decor of each unit in accordance with the guidelines provided by the Kentucky Heritage Council and the National Parks Service Historic Preservation Guidelines." So, given that we have heard those concerns, so what's going to happen now? Instead of the city view the person who is listed in that declaration reviewing them, they will all go to the DRB, they will be requesting such a bits of appropriateness, and they will be using, expressly using the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, which is essentially the guidelines that were mentioned in the declaration for Pearson when it separated from Green. Should there be any changes to the overlay district based on this community?
But they, so Green, it would be in it now.
As it's currently configured, it's everything that you see in purple. It's the Pearson, the Green, and Alexander circle. If you want me to take a minute and talk to you about why Alexander circle is different, I'd be happy to do that. Then, yes, Pam?
I do, because if I believe, aren't they trying to get rid of the HOA? Or just they did, did they recently get rid of it?
So Pearson is considering getting rid of the HOA. Green, according to this person, is up and functioning and working well. And then Alexander circle, when it happened, the actual ordinance that created the DRB and created the local historic district for the central business district was amended. And at that time, and in order to, and it was amended to say that the DRB had to review those homes. So that is why it is different because it's very clear in that ordinance in the city's code that the DRB reviews those. And it has its own set of standards that were developed at the time that that happened. So that's why there's no, you know, there's nothing in terms of Alexander circle that we need to be considered about, concerned about. It's Pearson and Green.
If they get, so if they do get rid of the HOA, then the city will man pay, dang it, everything, correct?
So...
It would be over there.
So, but keep in mind that Green is not considering getting rid of the circle. They have separated.
Okay, got it.
And so it's just Pearson that is considering getting rid of it. And yes, by the declaration...
Yes.
The city would still be reviewing it. But there is enough ambiguity in that declaration that everyone involved, all the stakeholders, are uncomfortable with it.
Right.
And again, it just says the city reviews and gives a timeframe. And so at least in this situation, it would be going to the DRB, going through the same process that all of the other properties within a historic district go through. Tim, do you want to add anything to this?
No, I think you hit the nail on the head. The city was letting the signal to the declarations pick, it's really kind of weird how it came about. And I think the folks on Green, their position is we're a well-functioning HOA. The additional need to go in front of the board, the just, sorry, PRB, if there is in the square of the overlay is one additional thing that they think is just a little too much. So, but that's kind of where we're at and what you guys need to think about.
So were there no restrictions that were imposed upon those lots when they were sold in terms of the state secretary standards?
I don't think so. I'll tell you when I'll find out tomorrow, I'll look at the, I know like on the ones in the back, like, there are jobs, there are some pretty significant deed restrictions that some of them were not aware of and now they are.
Because I thought, my understanding of it was when they created, hold on a second. When they created the, when the property was conveyed to the city for redevelopment back in the day, that those deed restrictions from the National Park Service and Secretary of Interior standards went with the land.
And that definitely happened with Alexander circle.
I think that happened with all of Tyre Park.
And it was supposed to happen with these two.
It did.
And there are covets and restrictions and declarations. But as Tim said, he can't find the...
I just love it. It's in my mind.
Even though it's attached to their land. So we're trying to...
Does it matter whether we're, whether we're signaled or not?
If it's a deed restriction, it's in the deed itself.
It is.
It is.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I think I can be helpful since I, there's several errors and confusion. And I know that I can clarify these a few things because I live on Pearson. And yes, it's in your deed. When you buy a home on Green or Pearson, yes, you have these restrictions based from the Secretary of Interior and the Kentucky Heritage Council.
That's what, it does actually say, so don't you, it's the Kentucky Heritage Council and the National Parks, the Parks Preservation Guidelines.
And so when I bought my home, yeah, I had to agree to that. Everyone does, including on Green. The other thing that I want to clarify is we're not considering on Pearson Street dissolving. We are in the process. We have an attorney, we have a surveyor. This is moving forward. Hopefully for months, five to the most. So, and since I don't care already talking and I'm suffering from a migraine headache. These four lights are killing me and kind of my brain isn't functioning. If it's okay, if I could just throw out a couple of other things that I think are important since you all are discussing it. We don't want to make a statement on Pearson since we're dissolving the HOA. We just had a meeting about this. Yes, we still exist, so we could make a statement and say, "We believe that all three residential areas, Alexander circle, which they have their own memorandum of agreement, the MOA, and then Green, which we also know from meeting with Matt Kramer, they have to maintain their HOA because it's a private street."
Right.
So we understand that. And then there's Pearson. So now, potentially, if Green Street is allowed to exempt themselves and remove themselves from the historical overlay, you will then have three separate areas. And I had, we have, because, just so you know, we would like to say that we don't think they should, but we have decided at the meeting to not do that because it could even be that we will dissolve before this is all voted on in July or whenever that happens. But I can tell you that it's not going over well on Pearson Street in the neighborhood. And we don't care whether they have an HOA or not. That's not the point. Our main consideration is that it's not a high functioning HOA, particularly vis-à-vis this area of historic preservation, which is what we're talking about essentially with the overlay. And you could go by there today, I even have right now on my phone a couple of photographs, but there are numerous violations of the Secretary of Interior standards. I know how some of them happen. I don't know how others happen. It's not important. They exist. An HOA is...
I thought that Green...
Correctly. Visible from the right of way.
Okay.
And just to give you one really glaring, shocking to me when it happened because I was living there, is that on the end home on Green, as you're going up Confrin heading towards the armory there, right on that corner, they decided to put in shower block windows. Clear violation of their HOA and ours. I don't know how it got voted or if it was just done. I honestly don't know if it happened. That's one. There's all kinds of violations of light structures, front and back. And because of the nature of Green, especially on the, I guess that would be the north side of Green, to me, I think of it as the tower side. All of those homes on that side of Green are easily visible from the entrance coming into Green Street where they're putting in the new playground area. Somebody just put up, again, in violation, it doesn't meet the standards, the historical guidelines, a back porch. It's not horrible, but again, it's violation. It shouldn't be there. So, and then on the other side, there's things going on, lights strung out and stuff like that aren't so visible. But if you're walking on the avenue, again, facing the tower, and you're walking, you're passing the armory that is basically a parking lot back there, you can see the back also of that side of Green Street. So Pearson, our homes on the back are not so visible because there's that green space there, that undeveloped thing. So we're actually in a little bit better position to do something on the back of our homes. They're very visible, so it's, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? Sorry, my brain isn't working. It's not, it's just more visible. And so they're in a more precarious, is what I was looking at, a more precarious, refined position. And they should have an awareness that it is visible both in the front and the back, but particularly in the rear front from the right of way. And any person there at, at one of the shelters, which are always pretty much booked on weekends, anybody visiting, coming down the street, especially walking when you're obviously going at a slower pace, they're highly visible. So they are not a high functioning HOA vis-à-vis making decisions about historical architecture or these guidelines. And I know for a fact there's no one on Green Street that is involved in architecture or is a historic preservationist. So if the who's them, if they want to have the HOA and they understand they need it, that's fine. But why wouldn't they want to be part of a vigorous application, vigorous understanding of historical guidelines? And that they don't understand. And then again, came up in the meeting, why, why don't they want to be part of that? Why do they want to be removed? There's no undue inconvenience or unnecessary cost or expense of any kind for them to be in the historical overlay. In fact, given what I just said about numerous irregularities up to clear violations, they need some help. They need some help. And within the last year, there's been three or four homes that have been bought and sold on Green Street that have big turnover. In fact, they've had in the last five years, really large turnover on Green Street. So again, an HOA has numerous inherent weaknesses. It's only as good as the members there. And I disagree too. Certainly Pearson's never had any problems. I don't think there's any kind of a time delay that they don't get going to the planning commission to the DR, in this case, that would be governed by the DRB. I don't, person didn't give any examples. I don't think there are any examples where that would cause them an unnecessary delay. The DRB is very quick about that. I don't see that as a problem. And so I say that their whole premise of, "Well, we're a high functioning HOA, so we should be exempt from the historic overlay," is ludicrous and obviously in error. So I think also administration of three separate areas, which we would now have, Green, Alexander circle, and then Pearson, would have three different areas with three separate kinds of things. That's inefficient at the very least. So I, as a resident of Tower Park, also, I could say that I am, since I'm currently president of a newly formed group called Friends of Tower Park, currently 25. And we haven't even gone to social media yet. Members just from hearing about us, we anticipate 100 to 200 within six months of going on social media. They're also for actually increasing and strengthening historical guidelines. And we really applaud the development of this historical overlay. They thought it was a great idea. And we are dismayed because basically of one person who doesn't want to be in it and his statements, as I said, are wrong, veronius. And I will end just by saying, it is a fact, you can Google it, and I'm sticking strictly to facts here, that he knows nothing about historical preservation. And he is a disgraced attorney. He is actually a convicted criminal. He was sentenced to a year in jail, did not serve that. I have the legal thing on my phone if you'd like to see it. And this person caused a lot of problems in Newport, trying to stop their Buena Vista historic district. You can go see all of that online on YouTube. And so he has now moved Fort Thomas and is also starting that same kind of action. So I would like you to weigh all of the evidence, the facts of all of this, the ones I presented to you, and continue with your original concept of the historic overlay. And in fact, I would like to see the memorandum of agreement, because I think it's very well done, be used as the basis of decisions based from the DRB on appropriateness.
Thank you. So based on any of that, do we stay with what we have, which is the district here and the signature of standards? Are they all okay with that?
I remember in 1992 or whenever it was, the city, they took over ownership. They got rid of all the asbestos because for 100 years, people had been putting on different additions. Their whole point was to make them all look similar, make them all a part of one district, even though the houses are, you know, different sizes. They wanted the colors the same. They wanted the porches to all look uniform. And the city did a lot in order to get that to look like a neighborhood. And I would agree that the last thing they want to do is turn over those decision-making to some HOA that, you know, may not have that same concern that the city had. Unless the city's changed their mind. I know the city was very adamant in 1990 or so that they wanted to make those, to put them back the way they were, at least as closely as they could, and make those look like uniform houses. I think if you open up to an HOA making those decisions, I think that could happen depending on...
Well, they could make amendments and change anything that they want if they all voted the majority. And then they would not maybe be historically, even though they are. But they could make some changes with an amendment. They would have the power to do that.
Unless there's deed restrictions.
That is true.
But the deed restrictions are, I mean, I read what it said.
It's not.
Well, are they the deed itself?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what's on the deed restriction.
But who enforces those?
And that's the, that's the whole problem. Is that in one case, the city is supposed to review them and it fell through the cracks for some things. And then the whole problem of enforcing it. So by having a clear process by which all of them are reviewed, which would be the DRB, that then lends itself to a better certainty for everyone. And then it gives an enforcement mechanism which currently doesn't exist, even in the deed restrictions. So...
It seems to me you've made the case that, I don't think we need to change them. Do you want to leave it there and have the DRB responsible for it?
All right, I promised that we would start and finish with short-term regulations, and here we are. So we are talking about the multifamily districts, which are the R3 and the R5 properties. As I mentioned earlier, the definition created for the short-term rental properties in 2021 restricts them to an accessory use no matter what district they are located in. When the regulations were adopted in 2021, short-term rentals were added as an accessory use in the R3 and the R5. And despite being a permitted accessory use in the multifamily districts in the 2021 regulations, short-term rental units were only permitted in a tax single family, as I said, detached single family, two-family, townhomes, the central business district housing, condominiums, and land dominions. And we've already discussed how these, this is a definitional problem. So here we are. Should they be a principal or an accessory use in the R3 and the R5 districts? If it's an accessory use, how is it, you know, accessory? Is it Kevin's definition that if there are 12 units in the building, only five could be short-term rentals, because that's, you know, that's accessory in those terms? Is it short-term because someone is renting a bedroom in their, you know, their apartment? What do we mean by accessory if that's where we want to go? Kevin's, you know, if you, they get a principal use, an entire multifamily building could be used for a short-term rental, which is, you know, obviously has huge policy implications as well. So Kevin's question about what are the implications of all of this? So there are several. You are taking rental units off the market and restricting the number of rental units in your community, that's one, one implication of doing this, and making it a principal use. If you allow, you know, some units to be short-term rentals within the building and other units not to be, then you have all the transient things that we were talking about earlier. You know, what you may have meant, and when you did this in 2021, is that if you are in a single-family or a two-family dwelling, you can't have one. That may have been what your intention was, because you have many homes, single-family detached homes and two-family homes in your R3 district, in which case, we then have the same standards that we're talking about for those districts, for the R1 districts. But what you have, truthfully, is a mess. So, we're just trying to, to clean it up, based on what your intent was in 2021. The only thing I want to point out is, even if you decide to make it an accessory use, we can, it will, you know, can have, it can be restricted in the sense that we have all of the standards that we were talking about earlier. You can say that it's enough of a concern, that it's an accessory use, but it's conditional, it has to go with adjustment. So even if your, your initial decision is it's accessory, it doesn't necessarily mean that we can't have some really good standards on it. So let's start there. What, what, what do you want to do about short-term rentals in the R3 and the R5, and in two particular instances? When it's occupied by a single-family home and two-family, that's one bucket, and the other bucket is when it's multifamily. And so when I was out doing a sort of a search out there to see what you have, one of those buildings that I had on the, a previous slide, has a short-term rental in it, based on what I saw on either VRBA or Airbnb, I don't remember which, and they advertise it, and, and it's funny because they, they tout its proximity to downtown and various other things as a part of their short-term rental. And so, while, I don't know if there was an address, but I, they showed the front of the building, so I know where the building is. Anyway, what do you want to do for those two buckets, R1 and R2, is, you know, if it's an R3 that's occupied by those, or an R3 that's occupied by a multifamily dwelling?
Can we separate out the single and duplex units that are in the R3 and say they shall be subject to all the restrictions we put on the R1?
Definitely, and then you could say, that's the only time they're allowed, and you can say that you're not, they're not allowed at all in multifamily. Now, having said that-
Well, I'm not suggesting, I, I mean, I don't know what we do with multifamily, I'm just, I think we've kind of addressed what we, we're thinking about with single-family and duplex, that you've got the owner occupied and et cetera, so if we just say, if there is such a, you know, structure within the R3, that those are going to be subject to the R1 and R2 rules?
Yeah, you can do it.
I'd be more concerned about living in a four-family and having, I mean, those people are actually in the building with you now.
Yes.
I mean, you don't really-
I think we need to address-
Yeah, I think it's even worse than a-
No, I agree with that.
So let's, let's take that buck. So Tim's saying if it's an R1, if it's an R3 and is occupied by a single-family or a two-family, meets the standards for R1 and R2. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Awesome, so it's an accessory use with those standards. Okay. What do we want to do for multifamilies? Because it's, some of them are four units and they got a short-term rental on there.
Say that again, I didn't hear that.
So you have some small apartment buildings, like four units, six units, like there's one today that has a short-term rental in it, whether it's licensed or not, I don't know, but it was up on the website. So the question in front of the Planning Commission is, how do we handle short-term rentals in these multifamily structures?
And how are they handled now? Are they permitted now?
So, the one that's out there, I don't know whether or not it has a license, but Kevin, what have you done?
We haven't had any requests for any in an R2 or R3 or R5.
But there is a request-
So it's not licensed, I can say that. But we haven't had any requests. In all honesty, I, I'd have to look at the language, but the way the language seems to read, it wouldn't be permitted for them.
Well, it says that it can be an accessory use in the R3 and the R5.
Okay, well then, possibly then yes, but I haven't, I haven't been approached about it.
And that's the problem, it doesn't distinguish what it meant by that. The regulations in 2021 said that you can have short-term rentals as an accessory used in the R3 and the R5.
What's the accessory use again?
So accessory use, as it's defined in this particular situation, is that it has to be subordinate incidental to the principal use.
So it could be eliminated?
Certainly, that is, they certainly could say, the Planning Commission and the Council can certainly say that you would not be allowed to have short-term rental in a multifamily dwelling, and a multifamily is defined as more than two.
That's what they're ready to talk about now.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about now.
I would lean towards doing that. If I lived in a four-family, I would want people coming and going. I mean, it's nice to know when, who your neighbors are when they live 20 feet away from you in another single-family house, but when they're, you know, eight feet across the hall from you, or beneath you, or above you, I think it's a lot more problematic.
Is that where we go?
Is that different with a two-family?
Yes. Because you don't have a common hallway. A four-family or a six-family, more than less, would have a common hallway, that they're going to be walking in, past your door, loud when you have children sleeping, it could be a group of bachelors or bachelorettes having a party there all night, and it would disrupt the whole entire building. A two-family, at least, you have possibly some firewalls in between, and maybe not here.
What if somebody wanted to turn their whole four-family into all short-term?
So that's a separate issue. So do you want to do that?
Well, I, I don't know, I'm asking the question, I understand, I understand the question, if you had three, three people in a four-family or their, you know, on year of leases, you know, you don't want somebody else, I'm just wondering, you know, do we want to, I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just saying that it's a different situation.
So the impacts of it are more intense, right, than you would have for a traditional multifamily? You have many more people coming and going. Properties tend to be, I mean, I hate to make gross generalizations, but they tend to be less well-maintained when they're, when the population is more transient. It puts greater, it's a more of an inspection potential of violation issues for Kevin and Mark to deal with. So, and, and it will take rental markets, rental units out of your supply.
That's true.
But that's a whole separate, I mean, we can, I mean, that's, do you want to allow it as a principal use if the whole building is short-term rental?
I don't think I would, I don't think I would ever allow it as a principal use.
But that's what Tim asked, is if the whole building was short-term rental?
I'm not suggesting we do it, I just, I just-
That's a really good point. Until, yeah, until someone comes in and say that's what they wanted to do, I mean, we need to-
And if they did come in and if we don't say this, if we don't expressly prohibit it-
Yes.
Definitionally, I don't know how we would. Because it would be a multifamily dwelling occupied by people who rented, so definitionally, I don't know how you would prevent it, if we don't specifically prohibit it.
I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we want to prohibit it.
Yes.
All right, so what I'm hearing is-
Unless there's case law somewhere else that's come up with this.
Dr. Damm aware of?
No, no. And there are many states that, you know, are doing things all over the board. There are some states who are specifically saying communities cannot regulate short-term rentals, that's, you know, one side of the equation. There are other communities, other states who are saying, this is a huge economic burden for us, and so, you know, we're going to allow them all day long. But as to my knowledge, Kentucky has not come down with any enabling legislation that impacts your ability to regulate short-term rentals.
I just researched it today about how.
I mean, I think there's so much variation geographically and economically between different places, that it would be hard to have a blanket.
Space room.
Comes up or comes down, really, but I don't see the demand in our community for substantial size, multi, sort of permanent. There's a compelling economic need.
It's why we don't have a hotel.
That's right, exactly. Exactly.
No jobs.
All right, so what I've heard is that if they are a single-family or a two-family in an R3 or R5, they're subject to the same standards as the R1s and the R2s, and that short-term rental is prohibited in multifamily dwellings, period.
Period.
All right. Any community comments on Tower Park and short-term rentals in multifamily districts? All right, so the Planning Commission will be again tomorrow night to finish discussion regarding the zoning districts. That will be the final meeting for the Planning Commission during Phase 3 will be April 17th. And as I said, at that point, what we will be discussing are the things that we have not completed so far in Phase 3, and we'll be doing the sound regulations, it's what we know right now. Anything else?
Did you want to pass out?
Yeah, 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 yeah. This was discussed at the City Council meeting last evening, and it's really just the community's input on what we would like to see for zoning, and we've, we've met a lot with Elisa, obviously, but we really wanted to just make sure that it was in our terms, because sometimes interpretation, oh, I'm one short.
I was there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you were picked one.
I was there.
Yes. And then we just also wanted to, I'm not going to read it for you, because you guys can all read, but the second page is from the city's comprehensive plan, the survey results. We just want you guys to consider that as you're considering zoning changes, because it's supposed to be the blueprint for the zoning.
That's all I have, thank you so much.
Dave, could I piggyback on that just for a second? I promise I won't take a lot of your time. So one of the things to be put in there was, and I don't know if you all are even aware of this, but when the current comprehensive plan was drafted, there was a citywide survey. Did you all know about that? Did you did? Because if you, if you look on, on page two, a lot of stuff that made into the comprehensive plan is in contravention to what the citizens said they wanted. Like, for example, only 28% wanted to create more housing in or adjacent to the local historic districts, but yet now we have, you know, a lot of proposals out there, the proposals out there to have, you know, three stories, so two stories of residential on top of commercial, in contravention to this. Only 35% were in favor of tearing down and redeveloping portions of the business district to increase density, yet in the comprehensive plan, and I'll just quote two sections, but page 189, the focus area plan for this CBD, the goal was to increase critical mass of retail mixed uses and housing, and a similar goal was put in the comprehensive plan for the Midway. So when I saw these results, I could not understand, I wasn't involved, I didn't even know this was going on, but I couldn't understand how we had claims in our comprehensive plan that are in direct contravention to what the public said they wanted. And what I would like to ask you, and I've asked you before, when you're considering these zoning changes going forward, and even when you vote on the entire zoning ordinance, Brand Fuel, which was the marketing company the city brought in, did another city-wide survey in 2023, and one of the top responses was keep Fort Thomas the way it is. So we asked Elisa at one of the coffee and conversations to look out the window and look at the CBD, and said, you know, how do we keep it the way it is? And what she told us was, well, what we're seeing out here are buildings that are 35 feet tall and they're two stories. So if you want to keep it the way it is, that's the way it should be. When the new, what was it, came the next month in front of a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, that wasn't one of the options, the options was three stories. One of the things that I would like to ask you to consider, number one, is to keep in mind what the citizens want. I, I know you have a lot of moving parts, you have developers, what they want, you have what commercial business owners who own their businesses want, but I think most importantly, the majority of Fort Thomas are citizens that live here. So I would just ask you to consider those survey results, consider what you've heard in the last two and a half years. What I see from the survey and what I hear over and over again are three things, and, you know, how do we keep things the way they are? And one of those things is that we're a bedroom residential community, number two, I've heard over and over and over again, please keep the small-town character and charm, and number three, to honor the historic significance. So as you go forward in these next few months, as you vote on the zoning code, as you discuss the central business districts tomorrow night, I would just ask you to consider what the citizens have said in 2018, in 2023, and the past ten quarters. So thank you.
And I'd also like to just follow up on that real quick, if we could also think about the other neighborhoods, because again, what some of you may consider a neighborhood, or you may not consider a neighborhood, is actually a neighborhood, and we want the same charm across the entire town, including Alexandria Pike. So when the, at the last joint planning council meeting, when there was a, how do you all feel about 48 one-bedroom apartments on Alexandria Pike? Or per acre? That is absolutely something that we do not want. It's too much and too small of an area, and that is, that's our neighborhood, and so we want, if you're going to create, create one neighborhood, or, I'm sorry, if you're going to treat one neighborhood one way, we want to be, we're 5.2 square miles and we're a gem, please treat us primarily the same. That's all I'm going to ask, thank you.
Do you agree? Second? One favor?
Aye. Thank you for listening.